Good evening. I call this November 24th, 2020, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. To remain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are four council members present tonight in council chambers and three participating remotely from home to ensure that proper social distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. In-person public comments will be accepted during this meeting with one speaker allowed in council chambers at a time. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page, and on November 27th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on Town of Morrisville's social media pages. Tonight's meeting includes one public hearing. Public hearing comments received from interested parties providing full name and address via the publichearings@public-- sorry, I'll start again. This is an email address. Publichearings@townofmorrisville.org email address from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes. In-person public hearing comments will be accepted during this meeting with one speaker allowed in council chambers at a time. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. At this time, I'll ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. We're at item three, the invocation. Councilmember Ann Robati will provide tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to bring us in this evening with an adaptation of Mother Teresa's poem, "Anyway." People are often unreasonable, illogical, self-centered, and scornful of your forgiveness. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. If you give the world the best you have, it may never be enough. Give the world the best you have anyway. You see, in the final analysis, it is between you and your best self. It was never between you and them anyway.
Thank you for sharing that. That's one of my favorites. At this time, all who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. Look for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19.
No motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson? Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
No. No.
Okay. Seeing our hearing none, are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
So, I think, staff want to add, we need to add a closed session to tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. We'd like to ask for a closed session at the end of the meeting in order to address a matter of attorney-client privilege related to land acquisition.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with the addition of a closed session at the end.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith will facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson? Councilmember Robati?
I apologize, I was muted. Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of a closed session passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are at item seven. There are nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Approval of the October meeting minutes, a resolution authorizing the Morrisville Carpenter Road Engineering and Inspection Services contract, a resolution authorizing Town Hall North Street acceptance, a budget ordinance amendment appropriating funds to install touchless fixtures in town facilities, a resolution to adopt CIP policies for land acquisition, town center, and greenways, and a resolution establishing a charter for the Morrisville Smart City Steering Committee. Do any council members have anything that they'd like to remove from the consent agenda before adoption? Seeing and hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
No motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson? Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay. We have no items pulled from the consent agenda. We'll move on to item nine, administrative reports. There is one administrative report tonight, an ERP system update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions?
Just a comment. I just want to thank the staff for all the hard work on this very, very intense project.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao. Seeing no comments or questions from our remote participants, we'll move on to number 10, presentations. There are two presentations tonight, a proclamation recognizing November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and a Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center operations update. I have the pleasure of reading the proclamation, so I'll do that at this time. This is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Whereas Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small businesses and communities across the country founded by American Express in 2010, this day is celebrated each year on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2010 through to 2019, or, sorry, from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, 96% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas, the goal of Small Business Saturday is to remind consumers that they play a key role in helping the small business in their communities thrive and encourage them to get out and shop and dine at local businesses. And whereas, when you spend money in your neighborhood, your sales tax stays in your neighborhood. You help fund public education, parks, and street improvements, not to mention vital services like firefighting and public safety. And whereas, supporting small, local businesses ensures that Morrisville will maintain its unique personality while also providing jobs for local residents, now therefore, the town council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday in the Town of Morrisville. We urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So that's this upcoming Saturday. Matt Lever, Recreation Superintendent, will make our next presentation. Mr. Lever?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to provide this update. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Thank you. I was going-- I'm coming back to bring an update from, I believe it was a July meeting where we-- I gave council information on the proposed operations and some of the budgetary information regarding MAFC. Now that we've been open for a few months, I wanted to return to give you an update on kind of where things stand. So, go ahead. I'm starting through the financial information. These are some updates to the expense projections. As you can see, this is the original-- the far-left column is the original 2021 projection for expenses, personnel, and operations. And then I provided you two updated projection scenarios. Scenario one, because-- and with the COVID restrictions, obviously, it's a little more difficult to make projections like this, so-- Projection one is showing continued restrictions through the end of March of 2021 and then a full operation for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year 2021. And again, this is just trying to pick a point in time and say, you know, ideally, this is when we'd be able to be back. Actually, ideally, we'd be back sooner than that, but in reality-- Updated projection scenario two shows, assuming that we're under the COVID restrictions for the remainder of the year. As you can see, there are some differences. They're not-- we're not projecting them to be as significant as originally thought. A lot of that will come into differences with-- it comes back to differences with personnel, largely related to the pool, would probably be the biggest impact there. And as you can see, the percent change, the assumption that we'd be-- we are projecting about 57% of the original projection and then 53% under the full COVID-- the full COVID restriction for the year. We'll go to the next one, please. Okay. This is the updated revenue projections. Again, the same, the original projections were about $443,000. As you can see, under the same scenarios, we updated-- revenue was also projected. Membership has stayed-- has been fairly consistent, which is good. Obviously, we're not able to open currently into a full scope yet, but we are managing well, and we're going to-- I'll come to some information here in a few minutes for the show kind of the usage patterns and how much of the building we are able to still keep in-- keep opened up. Aquatics revenue, as you can see, is probably one of the bigger things. It's going to be hindered. A lot of that is just the lessons, and with the COVID restrictions, putting people face-to-face with instructors is very, very difficult. We've had some parent-taught swim lessons, but those are more of an instructor-- instructing a parent on how to instruct their child who are face-to-face. So we are trying to do some where we can, but that is probably one of the bigger impacts that we're going to see for the revenue generation due to COVID. Okay. There we go. So what this means, and again, this is just kind of recapping what we talked about, looking at the estimated cost recovery originally was going to be right around that 49%, 50%, which is typically where MAFC operations had been close to something of those lines. With the updated scenarios, I did want to show you with those what the likely impact will be in both of those things. As you can see, with updated scenario one, the expenditures is quite a bit higher, the extra $60,000, and a lot of that has to do, again, with the amount of lifeguards that we would need on the pool deck just to manage a full-capacity pool with everything open, without the signup genius restrictions and being able to really manage how many people will be in the pool at a time. Okay? So the next one is just to give you an update on the usage that we're seeing, that all areas of the facility are now open to the public and are in use, which is great. We have now opened the lat pool, the programming pool, which has been open for a little while, and recently, we opened the spray ground. It is available to families on a signup basis like we have been doing for everything else, and they get a certain amount of slots to use the spray ground and the recreation pool, and staff has reported back that they are full all the time. And so they are looking at modifying that some to create more opportunities on the weekends right now for some of that use. But the weight room, cardio, floor upstairs, group fitness studio has been open for some indoor classes, the tennis courts, the racquetball court, so we are really excited to have the entire scope of the operation open, even if not to its fullest capacity. And again, everything is-- we're keeping the participation limited through the use of signup genius. It has been-- it's been very, very helpful for us to know what times are going to be heavily used, and so we can schedule staff a little more easily that way. But in large part, it's been fantastic with managing some of the exposure-- any potential exposures of COVID, and it's something that has really helped us a lot in reopening the So this is just a chart to show some of the facility use under the COVID condition. These are-- what the chart you see here is the amount of signup genius slots that are being taken. So in the first full month of operations, you can see 94% of the slots that we made available were taken by someone. 92% for tennis, and then the rest of them you can see as you go with racquetball, the weight room, and so on. There are some dips, obviously, with pool and tennis. Tennis, obviously, with the weather getting a little cooler, that'll impact it, but in general, some of the things that we see beginning to decline slightly will-- I would-- we are imagining that it'll be as similar in November and then again in December. As you can imagine with any fitness facility, we get into the late fall, into the holiday season, use becomes less and less, and then it really ramps up again in January. So this is just to give a chart to show some of the limited capacity in some of these areas versus a fully open operation. So for the pool right now, we assume about nine people would be in the pool-- this is patrons-- would be in the pool at one time. On any other given time, it could be at 17 or more, depending on what the activity was. In the weight room and the cardio, as you can see, it's somewhere between 10 and 15 people right now. We're holding it at four. And the fitness classes, we're anticipating get up to 18, maybe a little more, depending on the class, but we're only doing very low-impact classes right now indoors, Tai Chi, yoga, and Pilates, and so those have been fairly small, so we can maintain social distancing. And this is just to show some of the membership growth compared to the fiscal year 2018, which was our first-- our last full year in operation. As you can see, August was 65, but we were only open-- we were literally open for one day in August, so 65, we felt was pretty good. And you can see some of the spikes that we saw in September, taking us beyond that pre-renovation number, and then holding that, even though it was a little diminished, holding that still in October. We are attributing a lot of this to just the reopening and the general excitement that the building has generated. Just an update on programs. So I guess, as I said before, swim lessons have returned, but they are on a very limited basis, and that is, again, due to the face-to-face interaction. Karate, the adult classes is going well. The youth class is coming a little slower, but it is coming along. Our partnership with RDU Tennis for the provision of tennis clinics is underway again, as well as some-- they've done some pickleball and some wheelchair tennis clinics and some classes, and those have been very, very well-received. And again, as I talked to you about the low-impact classes inside and some of the high-impact classes that they are wanting to stay outside, which is, we're able to accommodate a much larger group. The weather has been cooperating with that. That also includes a lot of our senior Silver Sneakers classes. They have very much-- they have been very interested and expressed a lot of concern about going back inside, so we're doing those for as long as we can outdoors in a safe manner before the weather gets too cold. And then just an update on the customer experience and the customer service that we are-- it was such an intentional program when we reopened MAFC. It has been-- it really has been at the forefront of our operations at MAFC as we reopen, and they are continuing to evaluate what we're doing and focusing a lot on the RELATE acronym that we talked about in the summer. And again, I wanted to lay it out, the RESPECT, EDUCATE, LISTEN, ACT, TEAM UP, AND ENJOY. This is even something that they're doing as kind of a staff challenge in a recognition program at the center this month, trying to get a lot of peer review, and when they catch someone doing one of these things, to make sure they're recognizing those. And so we are really trying to keep it as a positive peer-pressure moment, I guess, for the lack of a better way of saying it, and really keeping it central in everyone's minds and making it central to our operation. Other initiatives we have right now, we are working with IT to have some iPads installed at points around the building. These will be used for real-time data collection on various things, whether it's cleanliness or just general impression, how was your experience in here today? It gives us some-- we won't know whom, but at the same time, this is just being able to track certain things on certain areas, whether it be, you know, weight room, or we find that people are finding the weight room experience, what they're looking for, is it not, and then how can we begin to adjust that? And again, Rachel, our marketing and membership coordinator, has been providing a lot of information to our users. Obviously, updates related to the restrictions, but newsletters, social media, and email updates, trying to keep everyone in the loop if we have anything going on or any information needs to be shared quickly. They are-- she's been on top of that, and the feedback from the community has been very, very positive. Just talk a little bit about the COVID precautions, and I'm sure this is something everyone has heard plenty about, but as part of that customer service experience, this is-- because it is our busiest facility right now, this is something that's had a lot of focus placed on it. So the clinic-- so we are right now closing the facility twice a day for about 20 minutes, 25 minutes, to give it-- it's an all-hands-on-deck staff effort where they wipe down everything just to make sure we are providing as clean and as safe an environment for our users as we can. The temperature scanning station, some of you may have seen, for patron and staff comfort, it reduces the amount of contact with checking temperatures, and it has been-- we've heard a lot of positive comments about it from both the patrons and the staff, not having to put them in such close contact when they're checking temperatures. Staff, even before the update to the restrictions yesterday, staff have-- staff wears masks all day, every day, with the exception at the time of when they were teaching for some of our classes, when they were in socially-distanced manner. Obviously, with the update, that's changed too, so now our instructors will be wearing them while they teach. And we have purchased some singing masks, I guess they call them, they are a little less restrictive right on the face for easier speech, and so we provided some of those to our instructors that should help while we're doing that. And some of you-- I'm sure some of the council members were aware, we did have-- we were made aware of someone who tested positive for COVID at the building, and the response was tremendous in terms of getting all the necessary departments involved, communicated, and making sure we quickly notified all of our users to the specifics of it, obviously not mentioning anyone in particular, but letting them know the times and the dates in case anyone-- in case anyone was concerned. And again, this was a member, not a staff person, so it was a very limited time that they would have overlapped, but at the same time, we felt it important to make sure we were very forthcoming, very transparent, let people know there was this-- there was, you know, this-- we had a COVID-positive person in the building, but have had no fallout from it. Again, we've had nothing but positive comments from our users, and a lot of them really appreciated the fact that we made them aware so they could think back to their time in the building over the previous few days. And then just to give some examples of the customer feedback, and these are things, honestly, that I've heard just being around the front desk and listening to some of the interactions the front desk has had with the staff, with the patrons as they've come through. One was really talking-- was talking to Kendall a lot about just how attentive and responsive the front desk has been with their questions, and obviously, with these changes with COVID and with signup genius and everything being not just normal, there's a lot, you know, a lot more opportunity for confusion, and this in particular, this lady was very, very thankful for how helpful the staff has been, how pleasant they've been when they-- when she's come in and has had questions. Another one was talking about the front desk handling check-in, how much safer they feel, and this goes back to the temperature scanning. They know that we're tracking people when they're in the building, again, with the one patron that did test positive, and in that case, too, we were able to identify that, and, you know, we knew who was-- and we were able to contact the people that were in the class with that patron. And so that has been a lot of really positive feedback there as well. And again, just it's nice to be nice, and so we're hearing a lot of good things about that, too, that people have really enjoyed coming back to the center, being involved again, and are getting-- we have a lot of new staff, and so I think they've enjoyed getting to know one another and getting to use the facility again. And at this point, I'll open it for any questions that I can answer.
Thank you, Matt. Do any council members have any questions or comments? I just want to say that I've been reading the monthly newsletter, and I really appreciate the email updates that have been going out. Recognize-- [crosstalk 00:05:25] Johnson?
Steve was-- [crosstalk 00:05:29]
You go ahead. I see you.
Okay. Matt, thank you for that overview. I appreciate it. I just have two quick comments.
Sure.
One, thank you for doing an update on the one isolated COVID incident that we had that did not lead to any kind of spread, so I think that's-- [crosstalk 00:11:01]
It did not.
I think that's good news. So thank you for that update, that you clearly all are doing a great job in the facility, and I'm glad to hear that. And then the other thing about the spray ground, in case our citizens are not aware, and you did mention it, Matt, that a family can actually reserve the spray ground for themselves.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, as a mom, that's a fabulous thing. I wish I had that when my children were younger. So if anybody out there with children is looking to reserve the spray ground for yourselves and your family, you can do that, and I think that's wonderful. So thank you for being so innovative in these times and making the facility as available to our public and to our citizens as possible.
Of course. And with the spray ground, actually, we had opened to groups of up to six, so if we-- depending on, we give-- want to make sure we're accommodating families of different sizes. And when they do use it, it's not only just the spray ground, but also the programming pool, in case you have older children that may not be as interested in the spray ground. But in case, instead of mingling families and households and things, we don't want to do that, that whole area is reserved during that slot. So it has been very, very well-received, to the point where we are trying to reevaluate some of the times to make sure, see how many-- if we could get some additional ones, make them available.
Great. Thank you, Matt.
And that group programming pool has a basketball hoop, doesn't it?
It does. Yes, sir.
That's fun for the kids as well. Councilmember Rao?
Yep, absolutely.
Matt, I just want to thank you so much and the staff. I've been to a lot of gyms in my life, and of course, I might be a little biased, but the level of professionalism from the staff, how clean the facility is being kept. I go there quite often to swim, and I'm playing tennis there with my son. I just want to thank everybody out there, and I'm really appreciative of the iPads and coming down the pike, and I think the signup genius has worked really well. So one feedback that some citizens wanted me to relate to you and the team is that could we perhaps have signup genius for our other facilities, like Jersey Park Tennis Courts, even though they're public courts, because it would make it so much easier to see when the courts were used. And that is so nice to be able to go in there and see, you know, when the tennis courts are being used. I don't know whether we can or cannot do that, but-- and then hopefully with Wi-Fi, I know staff's working on Wi-Fi in the parks, but I'm hoping that we can add Wi-Fi, you know, to MAFC, unless-- does it already have Wi-Fi over there, or no?
It does. Yes, sir. It does.
Okay. Then we'll-- well, anyway, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The feedback I'm getting, I run into people that say literally they're coming from Cary and other areas, and they say it's the nicest pool in the Triangle, and that they're coming. I even met someone that came all the way from Puque Arena to swim there.
That's great. It's nice to hear that the word's getting out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Matt, and if you could just, once again, go over how someone would get to the signup genius?
Sure. We have them on the town's website, on the MAFC pages, and it's also in our social-- some of our social media posts, where it'll provide a link to the signup genius, and then there are tabs on it for the different activities at MAFC, so there are different spots for the weight room, for the pools, for the tennis court and things like that, racquetball court, and those are available for people that could just go on and see what's available and sign up and reserve themselves a slot. If for some reason they don't have the-- it's not available to them, they don't have the access to signup genius online, they can always call the front desk at MAFC, and they would be happy-- they'd be happy to answer those questions and sit and do that for them. We have a few members who just don't have internet access or don't feel comfortable trying to figure it out, so the front desk is happy to just get online and take care of it for you.
Thank you very much for making that available. I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella with a question or comment.
Hey, Matt. Thanks for the presentation. It was really helpful. I have a question about-- excuse me, in regards to the signup genius, right? I have a question about, excuse me, in regards to the sign-up genius, right?
Sure.
Like, you know, you said, can you go to that slide? Like, it said 30, 94% in the first one month, and then, you know, it kind of dropped. I, I wanted to ensure you're calculating based on the people who have signed up and not the people who are really showing up, right? Because there is always a difference, you know? When we ran the pool at Breckenridge, people sign up, it's always full, but, you know, less than 50% or more than 50% sometimes show up.
Yeah, and that is a concern, and that is something we keep an eye on, and we have, early on, when, after we reopened, we sent some information out and posted it in the building about kind of a two-strike policy, that if you signed up and didn't show up, that we would basically, there'd be, there'd be a penalty for a few days where they would not be allowed to take a slot. We've done a lot of education as well on making sure people know how to get on and cancel their spots if they're not going to use them, and so we have seen a lot, while this, this chart you had asked to see is representing how many of them are signed up for, it does show that. We have, we are very aware of some of the cancellations and then just people not showing up, and we are trying to take some very positive steps towards reducing that burden so we can continue to make it available when slots are there.
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the ideas that we did was we bumped up 20%, just to see, you know, you have sufficient data, you know, seeing how many signed up and how many really showed up, so have a 20% extra, so the people who don't show up, at least it gives a chance for other people to at least come.
Sure. The, the other thing that it is important to note that this doesn't reflect, so for tennis as an example, it may be that if you and I were going to play tennis, or we had a foursome that was going to play, I may be the one person that signs up, so I'm showing that slot, but there might be four of us in that time. The same with the pool. We have, we have some lanes now, just to accommodate more users, that we've made double occupancy lanes, so if, say, you and a family member wanted to sign up, you know, people in your household that you are already comfortable being with can use the same lane, whether for water walking or whatever, and that has also been a help to make sure that we are creating as much opportunity as we can.
So, so when a person is signing up, they're signing as an individual or their family?
Depending on what the use is, so if it's for a racquetball court, say, it would be likely for two people, it would be for myself and whoever I was going to play with, one person would reserve that slot.
Okay, so, you know, unlike we did, like, every person in the family has to sign up, so that's.
Right.
A good number, you know?
Right, and we, right now, it's typically for the pool and things where the, where the individual counts really are important, if they know, they, you know, they will sign up for an individual lane or the double occupancy lane, just to, just so we, you know, they know coming into it, this is what it's going to be, and so staff does as well. That way, we are able to keep an eye on our numbers in a particular area, so we're not exceeding anything.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Excellent work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing about the uptick in January, which happens every year, so.
Absolutely. We'll be happy to bring that back.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're at number 11, Public Address. Town Clerk Smith, do we have anyone waiting to speak in person as far as you know?
No, sir, we do not.
Were there any public comments received via email today?
Yes, sir, there were.
Okay.
One comment from Steve Lauderdale, 2104 Glade Valley Lane, Town of Mooresville. Good evening. I'm contacting you concerning Agenda Item 14A, Resolution Approving the 2021 to 2022 Legislative Advocacy Agenda. I urge the Town Council to support the three school-related items contained in your latest draft resolution. Number one, advocate for the NC General Assembly to remove the K-3 class-size mandate for public school systems. As you may know, the K-3, K-3 class-size mandate was an unfuted mandate that resulted in the loss of hundreds of classrooms in Wake County, and thereby resulted in capped schools and assignment of students to more distant schools. Number two, advocate for the NC General Assembly to legislate that charter schools meet the same standards as public school systems to receive public tax dollars. Number three, advocate for the NC General Assembly to include school impact fees in residential development costs. Thanks and best wishes for safe and happy Thanksgiving. This comment was provided to council in its entirety and will be included in the public record. We did receive one public comment outside of the submission window. This comment discussed the Mooresville Carpenter Road widening and the concerns of residents that turn left out of Millard Drive onto a four-lane state road with no modifications to slow traffic.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 12, Public Hearing. There is one public hearing item on tonight's agenda, a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 951 Mooresville Parkway. Council will be briefed on this item, then asked to entertain a public hearing. Council is being asked to take action on this item at the December 8th meeting. Elliot Ward, Planner 2, will facilitate our discussion this evening. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'll be presenting.
Just click on the screen, take your mouse and click on the white area of the document, and it should pick it up. There you go.
I'll be presenting Item 2023-325-0, Request to Amend the Zoning Map for 951 Mooresville Parkway. The subject parcel outlined in red here is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Mooresville Parkway and Chapel Hill Road. This is the former Earth Fair site. The site is approximately four acres and identified by Wake County PIN 0754-49-1670. Casto is requesting that the zoning map be amended from the Community Activity Center District to the Park West Village Mixed-Use Plan Development District. The site is adjacent to the CAC zoning district to the west and adjacent to the Park West MUPD zoning district to the south. The current land use is the neighborhood shopping center, which is the anticipated use moving forward as well. The site is located within the town's corporate limits and would not need to be annexed. The applicant does not plan to make any changes to the existing site. This request is really instead to allow for flexibility for an anticipated tenant to install a mural along the northern building facade that faces Mooresville Parkway. The applicant provided a trip generation memo based on the TIA studies conducted in 2007 for Park West Village and in 2013 for Earth Fair. The memo indicates that the rezoning will not increase the combined site intensity and will not require additional roadway improvements. Options A and B in the next, in these two slides indicate the potential size and location for the proposed mural. The illustrations are from the minor modification that was submitted for the building facade and has not been approved by staff yet. The only difference between the two potential options is the possibility for awnings seen here in Option B. The mural will be installed on a surface over the existing brick facade and windows. Section 7.3.11 of the amended PUD agreement found in Attachment 2 in the Agenda Packet also provides language stating that the content of the mural will not contain any offensive language or images, any political statements, or any language that would be considered an additional sign, such as for advertising for the potential tenant. At the meeting on November 12th, the Planning and Zoning Board sent a recommendation of approval to a count, to council by a vote of three yes and two no. The PZB also suggested to the applicant that the permitted uses for the existing CAC zoning district remain. There were some technical difficulties at the meeting with audio and video, and this suggestion was not included in the PZB's motion. However, staff wanted to include it in the briefing tonight to allow council to discuss. An obvious benefit to maintaining the CAC permitted uses at the site ensures that no intended use is allowed, in the, no unintended use is allowed in the Park West Village MUPD district are placed at the Chapel Hill Mooresville Parkway intersection. However, a potential negative to this approach is that the CAC district may be removed in the updated land use plan once adopted, so it may be beneficial to incorporate the permitted uses in the Park West MUPD agreement for the site moving forward. If council does ask for the CAC uses to be included per the UDO on the, on the date of adoption, staff recommends that all the permitted uses in the CAC district be specifically listed in the Park West MUPD agreement to assist staff and administration moving forward. The permitted uses for both the CAC and Park West MUPD districts can be found in Attachment 3 in the Agenda Packet. Staff recommends approval of the requested zoning map amendment from Community Activity Center to Park West Village Mixed-Use Plan Development District for the following reasons. The request would allow for uses that are compatible with uses in the surrounding area. The request would help facilitate reuse of a significant property in a manner that supports the tax base and creates jobs while placing limited demands on the town's infrastructure. The request supports Policies 1A and 3C of the 2009 Land Use Plan, and the subject parcel shares access with Park West Village and is commonly perceived to be a part of the development due to the Park West Village Monument sign located on the site. Council should hold a public hearing on the proposed zoning map amendment this evening, after which council may either approve or deny the request. Action on the request is scheduled for the December 8th meeting, and that's all I have for now. Shannon Dixon, representing Casto, is attending virtually and has asked to make a brief presentation as well, and after which will be available to answer any questions. So Shannon, I will scroll for you.
I am here. I am here. So as everyone knows, this is Park West Village, and the property that we are looking at incorporating into our current shopping center is this area over here. These are some examples of murals that we have within our local community. This happens to be an example out of Fuquay Arena. But murals are, are a very large part of activating downtowns, activating communities. They create a tangible sense of place and destination and areas, and the tenant that we are proposing that we're putting in as a replacement for Earth Fair has made this a contingent upon, or made a mural contingent upon their coming to the center. This is a, yeah, these are other examples, and these are all within the local community. I believe this one might be in Cary. And this one should look familiar to everyone. This is in downtown Cary. Yeah, you can keep scrolling through. So just examples of how people incorporate the community into these murals that they put on buildings to, you know, just to contrast the negative effects of just plain brick on a building or concrete, and it just really activates, it just activates the, the building and the area of the community, creates a sense of place. So this is the proposed area for the mural on the existing Earth Fair building.
So that was all the slides we had for you, Shannon.
Yes. Yes.
So if there's nothing else, then I think we're available for questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we go ahead and open the public hearing? Mayor Portem Johnson?
So Shannon, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a request. I've made this request of Tom Lowell, and I spoke to him too. I don't, I like the idea of having a new tenant in this building, for sure, and, and a mural on this side of the building, I, I'm okay with. My request, though, is that somehow there be some acknowledgement of the fact that the building is in Mooresville, somehow they could incorporate some portion of Mooresville, whether it's our, our M logo or anything, and I'm just making requests, I'm not making it a requirement, but I wanted to make sure you heard that from me as well.
Okay. I believe that's the intent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Hi, I just wanted to ask either one of you, is it correct that Park West also has some restrictions that they would place on the mural? So it, and probably more stringent restrictions than the Town of Mooresville would place on it, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, this is a, you know, a very valuable asset for us, and we care very much about what we're displaying to the community. So yes, it would, it, there would be very strict restrictions on what could potentially, you know, be on the building. No profanity, we don't want any political statements, anything that would create any type of controversy in any manner.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. I would also like to second Councilmember Johnson's statement that a mural that, that in some way indicated that this, this was part of the Town of Mooresville would be very well-received by me, but I'm kind of a mural person anyway, but I would love it if it incorporated something about Mooresville.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
I just have a comment and a question. I love the examples of the murals that have been provided. I just had a question, are there any murals in Park West Village now?
There are not. There, there are not.
Okay. Recognize Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Hey, Shannon. I have a question. You said that this is contingent upon this mural, right? And so I was trying to understand, are, is this tenant somewhere elsewhere, like it's a national chain, or, you know, I don't know much about it, so have they done it in other locations that you can tell us?
I, I believe they've done it in a lot of other locations, and this is a fairly new requirement for them, that they are, you know, they're a very unique, unique, community-oriented tenant, and they feel very strongly, you know, that their branding, so the comments related to incorporating the mural into things reflective of the town is, would be exactly their, their desire.
And, and what if for a bit, it doesn't happen the same what Earth Fair went through? You know, they go, you know, they shut down. What happens to the mural? Because will it go back to what it is? Because it'll, who will maintain it?
This, that is exactly why the installation is, is, is the way it is. It will be on a surface to be attached to the building. It will look, it will look like it's painted on the building, but it's a, it's a little bit of a different installation, so for any reason we had to remove it, it could be removed.
Okay, so it's not like painting over the bricks there?
That's kind of, yes.
Okay. Good to know that.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very brief. I like the idea of a mural that incorporates something iconic or some elements that say it's from Mooresville. We have very few locations in the town where you can definitely know it's Mooresville, and Raleigh has been very successful in, in having murals around where people really enjoy, you know, kind of showing off, if you will. But this is a first for us, and, you know, it would be interesting to see what they come up with, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe, please.
Yeah, I, I love the concept of murals in terms of getting the community engaged, and I've actually noticed, one thing I've talked about is getting our arts community more engaged in Mooresville, and I think, you know, eventually. And I think, you know, eventually having some kind of, you know, if we ever had other murals where it was appropriate to have like the art community come and engage and express themselves. So, but anyway, I think it's a great idea of a local tenant, having a real community kind of approach. So I appreciate the slides that you showed. They found to be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone here in person who are interested, or have we received anything by email?
No, sir. There were no individuals here to speak for the public hearing, and we did not receive any public hearing comments via email.
Okay. So this has been a little bit different in our process at the request of the applicant. We're doing the public hearing and the briefing tonight. And usually, we close a public hearing and we just have it close the following evening when we're doing remote participation. I'd like to request if the council is willing to have this actually close on Tuesday, December 1st at midnight, to give the public who might be just hearing about this now the opportunity to weigh in via email in case they weren't as aware of this. So, any discussion on that request?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Fine with that.
So I see some head nods up here. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing as of midnight on Tuesday, December 1st.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. If Town Clerk Smith can do a roll call vote on closing the public hearing, please, as of midnight on Tuesday, December 1st.
Actually, before Eric goes, I did think of one more question. Can I just ask?
Of course.
So Elliot, you said during your presentation that the Planning and Zoning Board also wanted to make sure that uses were current with the CAC zoning district. So was the applicant agreeable to all that?
Yes. So that was a suggestion from the PCB that they maintain all the permitted uses currently on the CAC zoning district. The applicant said they would be fine with that moving forward. That's kind of why we brought some pros and cons to possibly doing that from staff level. So, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, they were, they were definitely agreeable if that was something that council wanted.
Okay.
So they'd be able to do all the uses they currently can, plus any uses involved in the MUPD?
So it would just be the current permitted uses in CAC would just stay on the site. And then for the agreement, they would write in four lots. I believe it's 36 for this one. And then these would be the permitted uses, and they would just list the current ones. So it would be different uses than the rest of the Park West Village.
Okay. So I'll take the vote on the motion to close the public hearing as of next week, and we can have a little bit more discussion before we close out this item for this evening.
Councilmember Robati. Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, December 1st passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And just one last thing. The parcel includes two buildings, so this would all also affect the mattress firm that's currently operating. Is that accurate, Mr. Ward?
Yes. This would not involve the other building.
It wouldn't.
It would not involve the other building. No change to that. Was that a question?
Well, essentially, it is part of the parcel, though, correct? So the whole parcel would be changed into the MUPD?
Correct.
Okay.
The entire parcel, yeah.
Okay. Great. So I think we're good on that item. We're now moving on to item 13, action items. There are two action items on tonight's agenda. A resolution amending the appointed public body's administrative policy in consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to a comprehensive update of the sign regulations. Erin Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate the first item. Ms. Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. How are you all?
We're fine. You're coming through very faintly, though. If you could talk a little louder, please.
I have my microphone cranked all the way up. Are you able to hear me a little better now?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for giving me a few more minutes of your time this evening. So very quickly, just want to highlight a few of the items that we incorporated from your last discussion on this item. At the November 10th meeting, there was a question about one of the proposed amendments that could affect the senior advisory committee members, and council requested that staff obtain some clarifying information related to members who could be impacted by that proposed change. So with further clarification and understanding of the grandfathering clause, it has been added back into the policy. Additional clarifying language that we have added includes clarification for members who move outside of Morrisville's corporate limits and become ineligible for reappointment, but we have clarified that they can continue to serve the remainder of their term where they are able. So the reason for that being, we've had some members who have moved clearly, you know, out of the state, and that may not be an option for them. But then we've also had some members who may move to, let's say Cary or Apex, and it may be more feasible for them to continue to serve the remainder of their term. So if desired, giving them that flexibility. We also clarified that attendance exemption requests will be directed to the town clerk rather than to town council for initial processing, and attendance exceptions will only be granted once per a member's tenure on the committee. Changes to the red line and the clean version of the policies were attached to this item in the Agenda Packet and highlighted changes in yellow. Happy to answer any questions or clarify anything if I can.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Erin, for incorporating all of those changes. I know there was a lot of good discussion at our last meeting. Sometimes when you put all that together, you kind of notice other things that were jumping out. The attendance policy, I think, is a little bit over-prescriptive. I'm okay with it, but I really think that people that have served on committees for several years, to have one exception in their entire length of service seems a little harsh if they've been serving maybe five years or six years. I get it if they were only there one or two, that makes sense. But over the course of years, life happens sometimes, and, you know, we're being very narrow in this attendance policy. So I would actually like to see more flexibility for town council to create exceptions, but I'm okay with that first-pass administrative one. So that's just comments. I'm not asking for a change. I'm just kind of stating a philosophy of, we might have overcorrected, but we'll have another chance at this because you built in a review cycle for this policy over time. The second item, I am going to ask for a change, and it's in regard to the work plan. Work plans have not traditionally been part of the advisory committee's scope of work, at least in coordination with the town council. And work plans are now being requested, I believe, to be done on an annual basis and reviewed by council. Since councils appoint members, they would also be reviewing work plans. There is an item in work plans, and it talks about, I'm trying to pull up the exact item, but it talks about the work plans being reviewed at a joint meeting. Yes. It's like three dots, section, item D, dot, dot, dot. I'm not seeing it on the screen. Are you trying to go to the spot on the screen that I'm referencing regarding work plan?
Yes, I'm trying to move.
I am looking. Okay. Before I go into a lot of detail. It's not redlined, by the way. It's like near the end, yes.
Is this it?
It's one more.
I think it's towards the end.
Yep.
There you go. I'm gonna zoom in.
Thank you. I think it's one more page. It's like, the annual work plan is a new deliverable, so it's under item D dot I I I. It's after attendance. See, we got a lot of words on attendance.
It's before attendance.
It's before attendance.
It's like...
We'll get it.
Oh, my goodness. I mean, this is a labor of love right here. I can just, you know, there's just so much here. It's, it's, yeah. Yeah. Okay, here we go. Item D, work plan. So just to give some clarification, when we have what we call a joint meeting with committees, we've had the past year a joint meeting with our educational committee, where we just had the educational committee come in and we had discussion. And we also had a joint meeting with our merck committee, where we had literally a meeting conducted and we had a discussion. And so a joint meeting to me means that you have a meeting with another committee. It doesn't mean there's multiple committees within that same meeting. So I'm sensitive to that three, the work plan, item three. I'd like to remove the word joint and just say a meeting with town council, because I want the opportunity for the town council to review those work plans, but the method to review them might be where we have a work session, and we have all seven of the committees bring forward their work plans, and maybe a representative of that committee or a staff member would provide that information, and then council would comment and set direction. To have individual meetings on an annual basis is very aspirational. I think there would be a lot of good things, but it's just too many meetings about the work plan in a, in a short amount of time. So if we do need to have a joint meeting, we can always call them at any time, but the policy would really compel us, if we use the word joint, to be having these meetings on a annual basis. And I think it probably would not have the outcome that we would ultimately want to achieve. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
So Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, if I may, when I hear joint meeting, I think that it would require a quorum of both groups. So I think...
Exactly. Yes.
I would support the removal of the word joint to make it a little bit more flexible. But to your point, I think it is important, and it does add a lot of value, to meet with at least some members of each of those committees annually.
Yes.
So I do like your suggestion to remove joint. Looking around for any other comments from any other council members on this item, because we're looking to vote on this tonight. So I'd love to hear a little positive or negative on removing joint, if possible. Recognize Councilmember Rao.
I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it, removing joint? Okay? Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing the word joint, too. I will tell you, though, when I read this, and it's funny how we all interpret things differently, I didn't, I kind of read it that the joint meeting could occur at least once annually to discuss the plan, but it could be anytime during the year. So, so I would like to keep that. Again, I'm okay with removing the word joint, as Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is suggesting. I'm good with that. But I do think having the ability to meet is really important. I think that the two joint meetings we had recently with the education committee and our environmental committee were really fabulous meetings. I got a lot out of it. Feedback I got from some of the committee members was that it was helpful for them, too. So, yeah, I'd like to see us, you know, figure out a way to kind of make this work moving forward.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Assistant Manager Zudema, please.
So I won't speak for Erin, but I will tell you that Martha has indicated that that would be something we could certainly make work for you, and I would tell you that Councilmember Robati has said she is fine with it and does not need to speak to the issue.
Okay. So it sounds like there's consensus to go ahead and remove the word joint. Do any other council members have any comments or questions on this item before we take it to vote? Okay. So I'd entertain a motion, including that small amendment, or edit to the town council meeting policy as drafted.
So I'll make that motion. Do you all need me to repeat it, or I'll just make the motion as the mayor indicated?
Okay. I think Town Clerk Smith is okay with that. Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Protem.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, will please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-336 with the request to changes passes unanimously.
I think I speak for all of us when I thank Ms. Hudson for all her hard work and for making the presentation to us so much easier with all the red lines and the highlights as this progressed over time. So thank you very much, Ms. Hudson. Next item is 13...
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry, if I could make one more comment.
Yes, please.
So just failed to mention this earlier. One of the things staff will also be working on is communicating these changes to our advisory committee and to our staff support members, so that we can be working on making sure that everyone is informed and aware of the changes, and getting that information to them, so that we can be getting all of these things that we're working on back to you all, really to help us kind of keep that momentum of keeping you informed and keeping everyone working together, so that everyone has the same understanding. So appreciate you all working through this and more to come on that.
Thank you very much for your communications two-way with all those committees and us. We gain a lot of value from their efforts. So thank you very much for facilitating. Our next item is 13B. Michelle Stiegel, our planning director, will facilitate it for us. Thank you.
This item relates to the comprehensive update on the sign code. You were briefed and previously held a public hearing on this item. Since the last meeting, we have made some changes to the electronic message portion of the code, reducing the maximum permitted sign area on a ground sign from 50% to 40%. And also made some proposed edits in terms of the frequency of permitted copy change on that sign. The current code and what was proposed to remain was 10 seconds, and we've changed that to needing to leave a message up at least once every hour. So those are the two changes that were made since the last meeting, and if you have any questions, I could try and answer those. Or our consultant attorney, Greg Jones, is also here with us this evening, and he's been briefed on some recent communications as well.
Do any council members have any questions or comments?
I do.
I'll recognize Councilmember Fender.
Where in the UDO did those changes take place?
They're at the very end of the proposed code, and this is going to be a lengthy document. Um, they're at the very end of the proposed code. Um, this is going to be a lengthy document. I could scroll. They should be highlighted, um, in yellow. You have the existing code and the proposed code. I believe the proposed code was attachment three.
All right, I see it.
So, those are the, the two changes that were made.
Do you have any questions or follow-up?
Uh, that's it for right now.
Okay. Um, and then Robati. Okay. I was, um, I'm concerned that electronic signs might become more of a preponderance and I like the aesthetic that we have now. So, it is my hope that the council will consider, um, asking staff to essentially lock in what is currently allowed, um, figure out which, what's being done now legally and limit any kind of electronic signs to match that so that we're not having any scope creep and having it expand. Uh, there was a number of those photos as examples, um, that were a little bit more than I would like to see in town, being colored and their sizes. So, I did go around town and it was mostly the gas stations that had some electronic signage. And they're very small, like one by two feet and just the, the price. I'd be interested in making sure that we don't make any of those non-compliant, but not allowing anything larger than what is currently legally allowed. And it's because I value the appearance of the town and I fear that even though I spoke to one of the property owners of one of the shopping centers and they're not interested in doing that now, there was another shopping center that in, indicated an interest in doing it. And I think that once one does it, I think that we'll have a lot of these signs in town. And that would be my concern, that it might get a little out of control. Um, so that's my hope to hear from other council members on their thoughts on that rather than just moving forward with the small change from four, 50% to 40%. We have a couple of council members who wanted to make comments. I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I have a couple of questions as it relates to signs. And I'm not really sure if we've talked about this in length, but, um, for government properties, for specifically our sports, our park and recs kind of, um, areas, maybe the cricket field, I think it would be great if we had a nice scoreboard that was a little bit sophisticated, electronic, could accommodate advertisements or sponsorships, if you will. And with the way that I'm reading these signs, I'm not sure if a scoreboard is considered like an electronic sign just generically because it is very content-based, right? Uh, it has a sporting kind of thing. Um, or, uh, how would a scoreboard be, um, you know, considered in these guidelines and could we install one like I described?
Um, so I will, uh, respond and then I'm gonna hand it over to Attorney Jones to, to chime in a little bit more. Um, right now, as the code is written, if you want an electronic sign, it needs to be on a ground sign. Um, a scoreboard is, is not a ground sign. So, again, that's the first part of it. But we have a lot of flexibility under the government exemption, particularly with town-owned property. Um, and that could be extended in ways as well. Um, so Attorney Jones, can I hand that one over to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Michelle. And that's a, a great question. Thanks, Councilmember. Um, like Michelle said, uh, currently, the scoreboards are typically, uh, more poll signs, right? For up on a poll or two and they've got numbers and the time and everything else. Uh, so, the electronic sign regulations are intentionally drafted narrowly based on, you know, feedback we've received from, uh, you know, certainly the council and the, the planning and zoning board about wanting to limit these. Uh, that said, the government speech exception, which is written into the code, uh, can accommodate, uh, these types of, uh, government-type signage, uh, specifically on village property, but not exclusively, uh, on town property. You, you could establish a program that could expand to allow, uh, these types of signs in appropriate circumstances on private property, too. So, there's a mechanism in the code right now to do it. Uh, we recommend if you do want to explore, you know, government speech options, it's best to establish a program or a policy that sets forth criteria on when you think those types of signs would be, uh, appropriate and what standards they would have to meet. Uh, that's one way to handle it. Uh, there are other ways, uh, through the, the zoning review processes, but it's probably the cleanest way is to set up a, a policy or a program to handle those types of one-off, uh, signage, which you likely won't see most places throughout town.
Exactly. Well, thank you for that explanation. I do have an example of a private property. Um, we have, um, I have feedback. Um... And I haven't done it yet. We have several private, um, places like the Wake Competition Center. We have table tennis. We have areas where they might have, uh, a need for information that's changed in a timely way, or they might actually have an outside scoreboard need for some of their activities. Um, how does, how would that work? Because it is a special type of sign as communicating sporting events. Would that be part of a future policy as well?
Mr. Jones, you're muted.
Thank you. It happens at least once every meeting. Uh, yes, you did, uh, you could handle it through a policy like we discussed. Also, your existing zoning procedures can handle some of this, too. Uh, for example, if you've got a property that's in a, a planned development designation or district, uh, we saw it tonight, uh, a discussion about murals, which, you know, is something new to the town. And, and there's mechanisms like you just exercised tonight to allow and accommodate those types of signs. Uh, so you absolutely have options, yes.
Great, great. Because that's just, um, something I don't want us to unintentionally prohibit because I think that's a really great, um, feature of our town is our sport. So, thank you for that explanation.
My pleasure.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that the signs that were included in the materials, I don't know if you have that document handy, but there were several pictures that showed examples of electronic signs. And I, I did not find any of those examples to be, to be more off-putting than just the presence of the sign itself. Um, and I think that, I mean, I certainly don't care to see them on, you know, like I don't want Breckenridge to have a big, you know, a big, uh, moving sign. But I don't, I'm not sure that I, that I have a problem at all with the, with the electronic signs. I think that they have their place and I don't think that they're, that they're garish or unpleasant-looking. So, I think that, and you know, I think that, that as a, I mean, maybe if it was a giant sign, if the whole thing was electronic, I would feel differently. But the presence of a small, of a small electronic space in the middle of a, in the middle or at the top of a, of an existing sign at the entrance to a shopping center or a shopping mall, I don't think is, is onerous or that unattractive. That's my comment. Uh, except that I actually had a follow-up question to, um, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Vicki, are you talking about like a, like a scoreboard that would be on the street in front of the Wake County Competition Center or the table tennis place? I don't, I don't, I'm not sure why there would be a need for something like that.
So, the PNC arena has informational signs that kind of say coming soon, blah, 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 welcome eagles, that kind of thing.
Sure.
So, that kind of sign I think would be appropriate for the Wake Competition Center, but we've got to be careful because of how we authorize that placement, zoning, all that kind. There's just a lot of variables there. But the other sign I was talking about was really a scoreboard, but a scoreboard that allows for space for, uh, sponsors. And so, that could be considered more than just, um, informational with the score, but it could be, uh, advertising as well.
So, I don't think that I'm clear. Wouldn't that be a scoreboard on private property? Would that be, would that be touch...
The scoreboard would be at Church Street Park with our cricket.
Right.
Or, you know, a soccer.
Oh, okay.
It's just a scoreboard and scoreboards.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We have shade and light.
Right. But it wouldn't be on the street, right? It would be on the field.
But the field is near the street. You can see the field from the street. So, technically, yes. It could be construed as it's near the street.
Okay. All right.
Just trying to be cautious.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So, again, with that example at Church Street Park being government property, even without some sort of a program, there's a little bit more flexibility there through the government exemption. Um, with Wake Competition, I did talk a little bit with Jeff Ammons this afternoon and he indicated he doesn't really foresee a need for a scoreboard there. Um, but if you're suggesting maybe something out closer to the street on some sort of a ground sign and making an allowance for that, um, there are other things that we could potentially look at with, say, you know, properties over X acres, um, maybe, you know, eligible for some additional flexibility. You do also have, you know, large shopping centers like Park West. Um, so, you would have to look carefully at how you crafted that. Um, we also look at, and I think there is, Attorney Jones, you could correct me. Um, I know we chatted a little bit today. I think there's something in the code right now that says if it's not visible from the street, it's kind of exempt from regulation. So, depending, you know, scoreboard may or may not be visible from the street depending on its location. So, there are other things like that that we could look at as well if you'd like us to.
Well, I was actually just gonna say, couldn't the church street, couldn't problems like the, a church street scoreboard be solved by facing it away from the street? Am I just being dense there?
Yes, you could.
Michelle's afraid to say yes.
Yes.
You're just being an idiot. Okay. Uh, thank you. I don't have any more questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
No, I think, Michelle, I was having the same thing. Like, uh, the PNC arena is a perfect example. Um, like, especially, you know, uh, when, um, like, uh, Carolina Hurricanes, uh, practiced there. And if there is some homecoming game or something, you know, especially Duke and NC State also play there and there will be, you know, a lot of other events. And also, keeping in mind, uh, future, like, uh, the high school, middle school, I know that is in Wake County, but, you know, kind of close enough, uh, if they have signs, um, saying, you know, homecoming game. Uh, so, those are the kind of things where sometimes it is important. And even for us as town, you know, I know we put this, uh, big sign saying that July 4th pancake, um, or, you know, you know, like holiday tree lighting. Uh, so, I, I, I would allow at some point, you know, that we could have a rolling sign that actually tells people what's going on in town and if any information has to be communicated. And, uh, like, good PSAs with the three W's are, those are the kind of things that go in my mind if we can, you know, be flexible. But are you're saying, like, under government, you have all that provisions that you can cover under, right?
Uh, yes. With the government exemption, and I'll let Attorney Jones, once again, speak to this a little more. Um, you, if you wanted to extend that to other properties, you know, one of the more common ways of doing that is to establish some sort of program. So, if, for example, one of our elementary schools wanted a message board, they would apply and have it reviewed against some criteria to be considered under the government exemption. Greg, did you want to expand on that?
Yeah, just to provide an example, and, and Michelle summed it up nicely, but one good way to think of the government, uh, speech exemption is a lot of communities will host, uh, sidewalk art fairs or, or even mural, uh, mural programs. Uh, and the, the murals in a lot of cases, and sometimes the sidewalk art are located on private property, too. Uh, and they'll, you know, allow folks to apply and, uh, propose what they want to do, show a drawing, uh, and meet whatever those application criteria are. And, uh, the town, by accepting those applications, is not obligated to approve them all. Uh, you've got enhanced authority to, uh, regulate, in short, uh, the content of speech to a certain degree. Uh, so, that's, you know, the same concept applies here if you've got, uh, public service announcement signage. Uh, you could pick whatever name you'd like. Uh, if you want to extend it beyond town-owned property, it's a good idea to have a program that's in place, establishes criteria that can be evaluated, you know, objectively against each proposal. Uh, but there's nothing prohibiting you, uh, in the government speech doctor from, from establishing a program like that.
Yeah, thanks. That's good.
Okay. Um, did you want to... Well, she's already gone once, so I'm letting everyone go first. Uh, Mayor Protem Johnson and then Councilmember Fender.
So, uh, it, it sounds like there's, um, a little bit of concern over this percentage. So, um, Michelle, this percentage, can we make it anything we want? Is, is that, that's under our authority to choose whether we want to do 25%, 40%, whatever?
You can make the percentage whatever you want. You could use a percentage. You could use a square footage. Um, we looked at the current code, um, ground signs for the most part. Some of your larger ones are 32 square feet. So, at 40%, you are really at just under 13 square feet. So, not an incredible amount of permitted sign area. We tried to go back and look at old permits, but as you know, we only keep historic permits for three years. So, there were only two from gas stations to look at. And I think that the percent of electronic message board on those ranged from 33 to 40%. So, we went ahead and went with proposing the 40%.
And, okay, so the 40% does represent what's out in the community today?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, if we wanted to make changes to this, um, whatever we settle on today and we decide, well, you know what, that's really not what we want after all and we want to change it, how easily is it going to be for us to change the UDO at that time? Because it seems like it's hard to change the UDO these days.
Um, you could change the UDO whenever you want. I, I think, you know, staff's preference at least is to kind of group amendments together as often as we can just to minimize staff time. But I'll tell you, whenever you're rewriting a code, and this is rewriting a brand-new code, I mean, I'll be honest, there are going to be things that we miss. There, as we're using it, we're gonna find some, you know, unforeseen consequences that come up. Um, it's inevitable. So, if we need to tweak, if we may to, need to make adjustments, we can do that.
Okay.
And, uh, there's no real urgency that we have to vote tonight if we wish to get some more information or have some more questions answered before we move forward because the sign ordinance is pretty much not being enforced right now because of COVID, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Fender? Uh, actually, sorry, Councilmember Rowe, who hasn't gotten a chance to speak yet, and then Councilmember Fender. Sorry, you're being really patient. I appreciate it.
Well, most of my points are made. I've been listening. But I, I guess an example, you know, and I think it's already been sort of brought up, but where there could be an evolving change is like, for example, cricket. Like, you know, if they were to partner and bring in a huge tournament after COVID, does, you know, you, Team USA comes to have scoreboarding that's electronic, which would be nice, just like a baseball game, right? So, that'd be an example of, a need like that came up, we would either, we could either try to get it in, uh, the ordinance now, or we could tweak the UDO to come up with an exception, correct?
Correct.
And, and limit that so that, as Mayor said, it wouldn't be something where everyone says, well, you know, you're doing electronic sign there and I want to electronic sign here. And then all of a sudden, we've got electronic signs everywhere, which I don't want. I don't think any of us want. So, I think that's the key is just, you know, on a case-by-case basis, things may pop up. And just want to make sure that we're flexible enough to, uh, to make sure that we can adapt that. So, or, we can do that, right?
Yes. I mean, particularly, you know, you're talking cricket, town-owned property, that's fairly easy. Um, but if other issues come up, I mean, there is an amendment process for the UDO that even if you, you start right away, it takes a couple months. But usually... But usually, we know that something has come up, and we could work on it and process things and make changes as we need to.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I really like Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's idea about the scoreboard. And, you know, even extending that over to the Church Street Park. I still have an issue as to what we would allow according to the UDO. I feel like, especially right now, we, it feels like we have such little control over what we can do in our town. So I feel like we're going backwards here, that we're opening up and allowing more electronic signs where I think we need to keep the status quo or be more restrictive. We don't need to be expanding to allow any type of electronic sign all throughout our town. So, I mean, a couple ideas I had, like, was the percentage. Changing the percentage of the sign. Instead of 40, can it be 25 to 33%? And then the other thing, I was just looking at, like, these examples of the electronic signs that were given. You know, I have no problem with the two that are down at the bottom. But the five at the top are just tacky, and I would hate to see any of these around our town. And then it hit me, what the difference is here, is that the two on the bottom only use one color. Whereas the five at the top use multiple colors. So is that something we can do? Is, say, it can only be one, or if necessary, two colors? Not a rainbow and all these other things that are in the examples?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that if that's something that the council's interested in. Really tried to give you a variety of examples for that reason, so you could see, you know, different ways that these signs are implemented.
Yeah, I'd like to see us be a little bit more restrictive than this new code, the way we're writing it right now.
Just, we can't, you know, limit it just to gas stations like we have currently. We can't say only scoreboards. So we're trying to find that median that complies with the law, but also, you know, meets what you're looking for for the community.
Okay, because I do think that Mr. Jones, at our last meeting when we were having the discussion, did say that you can limit the colors to one. So I thought that was a good point that you just made. So I'd ask if it's possible, if we could postpone this till our next meeting, if we could ask staff to do an inventory of current electronic signs in town. You said that you've only been able to locate a couple of permits, but there are only a handful of currently existing signs. So if we could do measurements of those, actual inch heights and widths, as well as the percentages of the signs. And then that would give us the information, I think, that we would appreciate to make a fully informed decision about how much we would be expanding current regulations or whether or not we'd keep them the same. So I think that that might be a good path forward that I'd like to propose for the council, unless I hear that someone really wants to vote tonight for some reason.
And I don't think that there's necessarily a rush, like you indicated. But going out to different properties and measuring would, you know, obviously take some time, and we would need private property under permission to do that. So I don't know if there are, you know, other ways we could potentially get at that by taking pictures and giving you some sorts of estimates of things.
Whatever you were able to do in a legal manner, I think would be appropriate. So. Okay. Council, okay with giving that direction to staff? So we can have a little bit more information before moving forward with this one?
Yeah, I-
Councilmember Garamilla?
Yeah, I'm going to say we can get all that information, but I don't know how much it's going to change my decision point. Because it's, the town is continuously changing, you know, and with new developments coming in, so it's not like the current inventory is going to depict the future use either. So if you want, you can get it, but I think I'm pretty much ready. You know, I can even vote today if needed.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on that?
I do.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'm actually okay to vote with what we have today. It sounded to me like we could have a follow-up where we would further define some, like, scoreboard or special circumstances, special use signs. But the majority of this proposal, I think, is ready to go. An electronic sign, what we have, it's consistent. The 40% is a good compromise with what we had before. And if we need to revise these sign guidances over time, I heard that we can do that. So it's important that we start being compliant, in my opinion. And I'm ready to start that tonight if we can.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine either way. I mean, if we vote tonight, it's not going to prevent us from making changes down the road. I don't know.
It won't, it'll be difficult to make it more restrictive. I was hoping that if we could wait two weeks, we could have the most restrictive as an option, and then we could always expand to make it larger later. Councilmember Abadi?
Yeah, I would be, I would be against the tactic of voting tonight with the idea that we could always change it later. I think that if enough of us have a clear, have a clear view that what's in the policy as proposed is what we're fine with in the UDO, then that's one thing. But I think to vote on it tonight and figure that we can already, that we can always make changes later when that counts out of the bag, I think that's a mistake. So, you know, if people are fine with what's in the proposed UDO, then I don't, I'm not sure that we're going to get new information that's going to make us less fine, you know. But if, if there are, if a significant, if an overriding number of us have questions that need to be answered over the next two weeks, that's a good reason not to vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender?
Well, I just want one clarification. Does this current UDO limit the number of colors on the electronic sign now?
The current code does not. The proposed code currently does not.
Okay, I mean, that, to me, is a huge issue. And I'm surprised that more of my fellow council members do not have, that are okay with having these five tacky signs around our town. We already have so many issues right now with overdevelopment in our town. This is one area that we can control to some extent. We should take advantage of that and have our signs, you know, electronic is fine, but keep it one color and have them look tasteful. I just, I just think allowing, voting yes on this UDO right now as it stands is the wrong direction for our town.
Could I make a suggestion for council to react to? Within the current code, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Jones, I believe we've grandfathered in all existing electronic signs. Because we do have some at gas stations that say are on the canopy and in other places. So I believe the current code indicates that whatever you have now is allowed to be maintained in perpetuity. So, you know, we did look at past permits just to get an idea of what was reasonable. And the two that we found, you know, the largest, was 40% of the sign area. We could reduce that, if existing are grandfathered, we could reduce that to somewhere between the 25 and 33% and then maybe go down to two colors. And the change that, one of the changes that Attorney Jones had recommended with the change once every hour, I think really acts as a disincentive, because these are expensive. And so if you're limiting how often that copy could change, the benefit of having it is reduced as well. So I wanted to throw that out there, too.
So it sounds like there's enough uncertainty on the part of the council that if you come back as soon as you can with this, ideally in two weeks, with that other information and options that we can react to about limiting to one color or two color, et cetera, I think that would be best for the council and the group. So we appreciate all the work that's already been done and the work that you're going to do on our behalf. At this time, we are scheduled for a break. So I see, did you have any final comments?
Nope.
Stiegel, okay. It is 7:41. We're going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 7:52, please. It is 7:52. We're coming back to order. We're now item 14 on our agenda. This is items with update. There is one item with an update on tonight's agenda, a resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Biennium Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals. Erin Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager, will provide the update. Ms. Hudson?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Are you all able to hear me a little bit better this time?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So really quickly, just want to give a couple of comments about this item. At your last meeting, staff had shared some ideas for inclusion in a proposed advocacy agenda, as had been provided by department head staff and some members of town council. During your discussion, you all had indicated that you would like some more time to collaborate on more schools' needs, possible local bill options, and really have time to narrow the focus for items to be included in a proposed advocacy agenda. So what's been provided in your packet tonight is some more detailed information related to the updated league advocacy goals process that started this fall. And that's as compared to previous sessions. That's attachment one. We have reformatted the list of input that was received that would hopefully aid you in your discussion, and that is attachment number three. That attachment also includes some specific feedback related to the implicit bias training. There was a comment, I believe, from Mayor Protem Johnson, that her feedback on that item was that she really felt that was important for all employees as opposed to only law enforcement employees, so that was noted. We also noted some ideas that submit, that were submitted that were not included in your original draft resolution. We noted ideas or similar language that was considered and supported by the league's Legislative Policy Committee. We did not update the resolution at this time. We felt it best to allow for council to have some additional discussion as you desired. And really, from that discussion that you all have, allow that collaboration and consensus to direct any changes to your resolution document. So we would actually propose that you all don't take any action tonight, that you hold on that until December 8. But take this time this evening to really have that discussion amongst yourselves as an elected body about those items that you all kind of started to brainstorm about at your last meeting. Have this time for discussion. You'll have some additional time at the December 8 meeting as well. Staff has also given you some additional information in your agenda item related to the overall league Legislative Policy Committee, what they've been doing, what they've accomplished in their recent meetings. Not going to go into all of that detail right now. And also, the league's Board of Directors will meet on December 10, so potentially, staff could be able to share some additional information after that meeting as well. But the information is there for you to use as best suits you, and staff is here to answer questions and help you through any discussion questions.
Okay, thank you. I think it might be helpful for us to be able to react to the chart, which is the last item of this agenda item, the one that you compiled so nicely. Town council and department head completed feedback. Thank you. Now I'll recognize Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I have a question on, and I am looking at that table. The item that says legislate non-public schools, charters, et cetera, to meet the same standards as public schools to receive public tax dollars. Charter schools already receive public tax dollars. So does this mean, is this more focused at private schools?
I think I can address that one. That's one that I proposed to be included. And it's my understanding that they, current charters, do not necessarily have to meet the same standards that our public schools do. So it's not a matter of them getting more money, but in order to get, to continue to receive the money that they are receiving, was how I was coming at that one.
I disagree with that one.
I'm sorry?
I disagree with that.
With including that one?
Well, because charter schools fall under the North Carolina public school system. They already have to meet the standards of the public schools.
Well, that would be a point that some people don't necessarily agree with as fact. But that's just a difference of opinion, I think. So good. Do any other council member, did you have anything else that you wanted to share from that chart?
Well, are you, I mean, are you just focusing this at charter schools then? Or do you want to include private schools in that, too? Because you have charters, et cetera. What is the et cetera?
Well, that, I think, any voucher program would be included in this, because vouchers are public tax dollars, so that would be expanded to include. Any school that's receiving public tax dollars should have some kind of accountability of equitable standards to what the public school system has to meet.
Yeah, I don't know what you're getting at there, because charter schools already have to meet public school standards.
Okay. So that one would need a little bit more fleshing out if it was to be included. Any other council members want to comment on that particular item before we move on to another one?
So I do want to comment on that. And I actually, this is a great example of, I think, why we need to be careful about what we're putting and what we're going to adopt in this, in this resolution. I think, yeah, I have a prob, I agree with Councilmember Fender. I have a problem with this, too. And I also have a problem with the same standards. I don't know what that means. I have, so I think when we, when we start putting these items, I think we all need to be on the same page. We all need to understand what we're talking about. We all need to understand the definitions, and then we need to be really clear. This is one that I think, and there are a couple like this, that require really some more thought and some more in-depth education before we do anything with them. And also, I don't, this doesn't fall under what we do as a council. We advocate for schools, you know, for our citizens, for sure. But you're getting into, you want to legislate non-public schools? That gets way out of our lane. I think when we put this list together, we need to be staying in our lane.
Okay, and CLM generally tries to do that as well, so.
And then they're coming at this from a whole different, and so they're coming at this from a whole different ballgame. And actually, the items that I added to this list, I added quite a few of them. They were from that overarching statewide perspective that I misunderstood, as I said the last time, the gist of Erin's email. So for our own legislative agenda, I would not include a lot of the ones that I, that I suggested. They were more broader for NCLM. And to your point, we typically endorse NCLM's goals, too. And I'm still fine with that, because we're a member of NCLM. So I would prefer to- So I, I would prefer to do that than to list all of these, quite frankly, or a lot of these, not all of these, a lot of these.
Yeah, so that's what this discussion is all about now, trying to bring us all together and, in some cases, getting more information from staff on any of these before we can make a, a good, solid decision. Councilmember Scargis Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Mayor. I also am concerned that we are stepping out of our lane. The NCLM has cities across our state where some of them actually do have jurisdiction for schools or school districts that they influence. Chapel Hill has a little more influence on their school system than just the county-based system. And so that is a very relevant topic for, you know, Chapel Hill. Morrisville, being in the county system, it's a little less direct. We do have influence, but it's not as direct of an influence. Also, with the charter schools, because of the generalization of this statement, I think it, it could be more harmful than what we had intended because federal money does go to charter schools, and there are standards. They're not identical standards, but there's, each has standards. And I don't want to say something where I think one thing, you think one thing, and another, you know, audience member thinks another thing because we're not being specific. So I think that there is some concern about including that within this framework. We can certainly do other statements or letter of intents or support, you know, outside of this framework directly to the Wake County public school system, but this might not be the venue that we want to engage with at this time. Thanks.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I, so it sounds like we're going to remove this one anyway. Maybe it's not worth beating this dead horse, but I just wanted to say that there are different kinds of charter schools. And if you specify non-public charter schools, those schools may or may not receive states, be received public tax dollars anyway. And the same with, you know, with religious schools and other schools of that type. I, I agree, though. I think we're like way out of our lane here. The other thing that I, I mean, like Liz said, I mean, some of mine are on here, too, and I'm looking at them now, and I'm going, yeah, we are way out of our lane. But, yeah, I, I guess that the, the charter school one, but the thing is that charter schools, whether or not charter schools receive public funds, isn't, it's not a disagreement of opinion type of situation. It's, it's, I mean, either they do or they don't, but if we're putting things in here that, that are up in the air, that are not factual, I have some concerns about that anyway. I mean, that could apply to any one of these if we don't know for sure what we're talking about and we're saying like, statements like, well, people may disagree about whether that's true or not, don't belong in a document like this. And that is what I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to identify anything from that table in particular, in favor of or against including right now? Just to review, Erin, do you want to just sort of go over this table and what each of the columns means, just to make sure everyone's on the same page that far?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. So really quickly, I'll, I'll do that, and then I'll also offer a comment as well. So on the far left column, you'll see, again, those items that the league's Legislative Policy Committee considered either similar or related language and where those fell in their tier ranking system. In the middle are the consolidated items that were provided by department head staff and council. And on the far left are those items that staff indicated may have some local application. Again, draft resolution was not meant to be final, was kind of designed to give you all something to react to. So what I might offer, just to help kind of facilitate your conversation or, or maybe give you something to react to, and Town Manager Paige and I spoke about this as well, would it be more helpful if we provided you a place to share maybe a ranking or some general comments or feedback where you can indicate, I would, you know, prioritize these five items, or I would absolutely eliminate these five, or I need more information on A, B, C, D? Would that be more helpful rather than trying to go line by line at this time?
I'll recognize Councilmember Rowe.
Erin, Erin, that, you actually read my mind. I mean, I, I mean, that's what would be very helpful to me, is to categorize and prioritize it in some kind of a list so we can, as a body, make the decision before the, particularly the short session, on what are, where would be the best use of our time to focus on bills where we're trying to get something done for Morrisville. These are all great, but there's a limited amount of time. So for me, a prioritization, kind of looking at, you know, where we can get the best bang for a buck. And also, you know, I think we have to also realize that we're going to have to meet with the leadership of the, of the House and Senate. And I think that, that is going to affect sort of our legislative strategy as opposed to if it was a Democratic majority in the House and Senate. And I, I do think that is something that we have to consider. With Speaker Moore, he's going to be sworn in for his fourth term as Speaker, and he's going to have his own goals. So there's a lot of things that we may want that if he and the leadership doesn't get behind it, it's not going to happen. But there might be, might be areas where he's willing to, he and his team are willing to work with us, whether it's, you know, infrastructure investments or ways that he can help Morrisville, you know, along with working with our Wake delegation. So anyway, I think prioritization would be very helpful.
Okay, so that would put us another meeting out, and you'd give us that opportunity in between meetings, I suppose, like we do for voting for advisory committees. I, I would like, if possible, if the council is amenable, to go down the right column with the whys and essentially have people speak up if they have a problem with it. So that would give us a good starting point because I think that those are ones that are generally okay, other than the legislate non-public schools, which appears to be a nonstarter. But I think some of the other ones are okay. So maybe we could do that in order to move forward a little bit during this meeting. So the renewable energy incentives, that seems to be something that this council has demonstrated an interest in. And I know each of these are just from one council member, so that's what makes it a little bit harder. We haven't really come together around them at all. Would anyone have a problem including that? That's, as you see, the far left has a C, so that's not going to be something that the league puts forth at this point. So that would be something that, if we want it as part of an agenda that we're affirming, we would have to do it at the local level as part of ours. Just to clarify, the Cs aren't going forward. As probably are by the league. Bs maybe, is my understanding. So Councilmember Rowe?
Can I take a first shot here? Are we allowed to ask questions on things that?
Of course, yeah. This is an open discussion. We're sort of finding our way through this process.
Okay. With regards to the, the one on legislate non-public schools to meet the same standards, I, I think that, I guess the concern there is that we're assuming that public, that charter schools don't meet the same standards. But I do think that's something for us to look at in terms of, you know, I'd be curious if, if staff could look at just policies of the legislature in terms of making sure that public schools get as much investment as charter schools. And I just am trying to get a sense of what, what we're trying to do there, but that, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I favor public schools, but I don't want to be unfair to charter schools. But I do, I do want charter schools to be held to the same standards.
Charter school is a public school. A charter school is not private. All North Carolina charter schools are public.
All right, maybe that's the thing, then, okay.
So I think that one's maybe one that we put back to the, our Education Committee or head staff.
And I appreciate.
Look at that more. So I don't think that's going to move forward.
Okay.
This group is from what I'm hearing now.
I was just bringing up that point because I wanted, I mean, and Councilmember Fender, I wasn't saying I disagree with you. I just wanted to clarify, you know, for me to learn. The independent, not, I'm, I'm fine with the yeses that we have, but the one that I'm curious why it's not even on there is, in, well, there's nothing, there's no yes or, it's like categorized as a C, is the Nonpartisan Committee to Redraw Legislative Maps. Is that just because?
So NCLM has put that in their C bucket, which is probably not moving forward because they're looking to get down to just fifteen priorities.
All right.
So that's what that means. And it's not, doesn't have a Y on the right because staff does not feel that that would be something that would be included either through their opinion or through what they've heard from us so far.
Okay.
Councilmember Robati has a comment.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robati? Thank you, I didn't see that.
Uh, yeah, just out of curiosity, why would we be moving the legislate non-public charter, non-public schools thing? Why would we be moving that to the Education Committee if Councilmember Fender, who's probably the most knowledgeable of all of us about charter schools, has just, has just identified that as a, as literally a non-factual statement? Like, why are we then moving it? What exactly are we moving to the Education Committee? I mean, that's just, I, I think we just, that's just flat-out a mistake. Okay, you know, we goofed whoever put that in there, let's just take it out and move on with our lives. What are we, like, what are we, what are we referring to committee?
Well, I don't, I don't think there's a consensus to refer anything to a committee. And I, I would agree with you.
Okay, so let's, that one's not going anywhere. So let's just put that one in the back. I mean, I, I brought that up, and that just needs to have more discussion about what that would mean. So let's not spend any more time this meeting on that, if that's okay. So if we can just try to make some progress, anyone have any comments on enact or expand renewable energy incentives for residents and businesses? I, I would be in favor of including that in our resolution.
I'd be in favor of that.
Me, too.
Okay, sounds like we're taking straw polls in favor of. Would anyone else, at this time, this isn't our final vote on these things, this is, just to get us moving forward a little bit more. Heard from three, anyone else interested in enact or expand renewable energy incentives for residents and businesses? This is a statewide attempt. Okay, so that's not something that's necessarily moving forward. Pursue statewide bond for NCDOT funding? This is one that may very well make it onto the NCLM list, which we generally affirm. So do we want to use up bandwidth to support that one at this time? I'd say yes. I'm looking for head nods up here.
Yes.
I've got some forehead nods up here. I'm trying to, not sure how I can interact with the remote participants a little bit more actively.
We're going to have to object loudly.
Okay, so I guess for the remote participants, if you're looking to opt out of anything, please speak up. Councilmember Scargis Johnson?
Mayor, this is really difficult in a hybrid situation. It's better it, when we're all remote. It just, it just flows better. And also, I didn't know that we were going to go through every one. I was thinking more or less we would do exceptions, like the education one was an exception that, you know, several of us had some concerns. But could we, instead of going one by one, because this could, you know, go for a while and, and we might already be aligned on the majority of these? So if we could just maybe do exceptions instead of going line by line, that might be a little bit more helpful.
Well, didn't Erin have a suggestion that would streamline this whole process?
Exactly. I, I'm struggling in this hybrid because I wasn't prepared to do this, and I think it's, it's a difficulty for the mayor to manage this as well.
I think we go back to Erin's suggestion.
Okay. We can just go back to Erin's suggestion. I was just hoping to make a little more progress tonight to make that easier.
And I appreciate that. I, I, I just know this is really a, a challenge for everybody, so I do appreciate that.
Councilmember Garamella had a comment?
I'm sorry, I was talking on mute from last thirty seconds. Yes, I said, I, I agree. I think we need to let Erin figure out a way, you know, we can give our priorities and then have it back to us by December eighth. I know we have a meeting on December tenth, and whatever the council feels are good, I will take that, being one of the Board of Directors for the NCLM.
Okay, I, I think the input into that might be passed, but that's fine. We appreciate your service on that committee. So if, Erin, if you could set up a format, I heard a couple of different things, like what you're in favor of, what things you'd want to definitely drop off, et cetera. I think you can take the legislate non-public schools off the list for now. For example, I'd be really interested in having the draft resolution updated to include the whys that are there, and that will give us a starting point to react to, if that's possible as a possibility. You could leave the current one and just have this redlined or something. That would help me to give me something a little bit more to react to.
Yep, so your, your draft resolution does include and reflect the, the ones that are designated with the Y in that far right column. But what I will do is work on updating that Attachment Number Three and providing some way for you all to signify, again, some priority ranking or some of those areas that you just don't feel are applicable, or if there's somewhere that you need more, more information because you think it could be. We'll work out a way for you all to signify to us what is most meaningful for you here in Morrisville, and we'll, we'll ask for that probably here pretty quickly so that we can get that compiled, so that you all can have that more collaborative discussion at your December eighth meeting.
Does that sound like an appropriate path forward? I believe it is. So thank you to staff for doing that work in the background to make it easier for us to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're now at item fifteen, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. These are always available online, www.towninmorrisville.org. Want to remind everyone that town offices will be closed on November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for the Thanksgiving holiday. Saturday, November twenty-eighth, right after Thanksgiving, is what we hope will be the best shopping day of the year for our local stores. And in partnership with the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, we encourage everyone to shop small to support local businesses as part of the National Shop Small Campaign. We just spoke about that earlier tonight. You can see the website, morrisvillechamber.org, to register your small business to participate. Tuesday morning, December first, the Chamber will be hosting a virtual State of Morrisville event, starting at eight-thirty, so please get registered and attend that. Please save the date of Friday, February fourth. We're going to be doing a virtual tree lighting, so we hope you'll be able to join us at six P.M. as we start off the season of the holidays. Now we're at item sixteen, council and manager comments. We will start off with Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by myself.
Okay, all I'm going to say tonight is happy Thanksgiving. Everybody, please enjoy, be safe, not only for Thanksgiving, but all the holidays that we're celebrating here in the area during this season. So just everyone be safe out there.
Okay, thank you very much. I would echo that. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have safe and pleasant holidays. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati.
I'm going to reiterate the same message. Just wish everyone a peaceful Thanksgiving. Please stay safe and healthy. Keep your family hea- healthy and enjoy your time off.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rowe? Thank you, Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Co-sign, happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving to everyone, and forward together through the holidays, and then hopefully 2021 cannot come fast enough, and we'll, and we'll be, see everybody on the other side. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Well, first of all, I just want to congratulate the staff on reaching the finals of the Global Smart Cities Challenge, and I look forward to seeing how Morrisville fares in that and getting our citizens to submit their vote. It's very exciting how far we've come. I want to just ask any citizen, if you have any ideas on racial equity. I'm serving now on the Luton League of Miscreantities Task Force on Racial Equity, and any of your ideas on what steps can be taken to address this issue would be most appreciated. And I'd be working with Councilmember Garamella and Liz Johnson on, on working with them as a former board member and a board member about that issue. And my final message is, I just want to, you know, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. If you're, you're, you have one or more empty seats at your table this year due to losing someone from illness or COVID, we pray for you, and I also pray, we pray for our brave soldiers wherever they may be. So have a great Thanksgiving, be safe.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, I hope everybody has a safe and healthy Thanksgiving, and there are many ways to connect with your friends and family, even if they're not sitting across your table. You can pick up your phone, you can send them an email, you can do video conferencing. It's not the same, but there are ways that you can still enjoy the holiday with your friends and family. So I hope everyone has a great break, and we look forward to better days when we're all together again.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Garamella, do you have any comments for the, go to the group?
Yes, okay. I, I want to echo that has been said, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and especially our staff, Martha and the entire crew, they worked hard through COVID and keep us above water. Thanks for all, you know, our police and the farmhands who have been doing. I want to end this with, someone sent me a text today, and this is so relevant, and this is how it goes. It says, "East or west, home is the best. Take some more rest, don't call any guests, enjoy your home fest. Don't have an outing zest, this is our life-saving test. So let us all be in our nest, a humble request as COVID is reaching a rest." So that is so relevant with what is going on, so please follow the three Ws. Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager Paige or assistant manager Zudema?
I'm looking for, Martha, I don't see anything. Mayor, I would just share a reminder, as you see in the meeting tonight, we're all wearing face coverings throughout. We are also complying with the 10-person limit in the room, although we have a government exemption. We're, we're doing our best to meet that new requirement as well. We have also shared with staff that we will be wearing face coverings in accordance with the governor's new executive order anytime that we are inside a town facility, other than alone in our own assigned workspace, to do everything we can to curb this pandemic. And of course, we're continuing to monitor and to adhere to the three Ws and encourage everyone in Morrisville to do the same.
Thank you, I see lots of good social media messaging around that as well. So thank you very much for keeping our citizens informed and safe, and our staff as well. Okay, we are now at item 17, work session. We have one work session tonight, a bond referendum outreach discussion. Jeanne Hooks, Director of Management Services, will, will facilitate. Ms. Hooks?
Good evening, everyone. I will try to keep this brief for the reasons that tonight's presentation is really a re-validation of your keen interest and goals that you've actually already expressed to us back when we were trying to work towards, vigorously towards, a 2020 bond referendum. So I feel like you've really done that work already, so I want to paint that picture for you and stage it tonight, and, and sort of move us through. So some of the, the actual goals that, that you expressed collectively to us, just to revalidate, is you were overall interested in us addressing, both on the front end and the back end, in, in appropriate stages, how to inform the community, really what a bond referendum is all about. So that's an educational component. But you are also keenly interested in providing platforms, two-way platforms, at the appropriate time, to really listen and get input from our community, really involve and collaborate. So that's what the, the basis of this high-level framework that provides guidance to staff is meant to, to provide you, to provide staff with that guidance as we start working on the work plans and the details to really get this engaged. And I'll also pause right here and mention that the laws around really what public funds can be utilized for in a bond referendum are very specific, so I'll remind you of that. As an entity, spending public funds has to be more about informing and educating, not campaigning and advocating as an entity to vote yes. So just remember our place, doesn't mean that as individuals, or as a citizen, or a citizen a part of a stakeholder group, that they can't advocate. So I just wanted to mention that, and we'll talk much more about that. So some of the things that we spoke about, that are vehicles that we're going to leverage in the most appropriate way, are, are many of these. So we have surveys, we have portals, website, social media, video. We are actually talking about engaging a professional video, and virtual engagement platforms. So we have a pilot program, sorry, I'm gonna have to pull this down to talk. We have a pilot program that we're working on to learn how to use most appropriately that helps us have that virtual, two-way communication safely. And then, of course, work sessions and open house, if we can incorporate those, depending on restrictions. And then our community stakeholder groups. And then what complements all of those vehicles are those printed materials. So flyers, posters, postcards, all of that. So at a really high level, these are what I would say in, in the plan that provides structure for the communications team is, are the stages of bond development and bond engagement. So we would start, we want to start, in December, by standing up a website and making that, that central source. So in our materials and our conversations, we would point to this central source of accurate and timely information. And then something that we heard from you loud and clear is that you wanted a, a front-loaded process, kind of checking in and saying, hey, while we have survey information from you, we still want to provide you that front-loaded opportunity to engage and say, what are you interested in us investing in? What are those big areas, big buckets? So we have opportunities to provide for that. And then your work comes in taking this input and creating these categories, and us, and staff lining these potential projects, and creating and adopting ballot language, and then from there, it turns into a much more formal process. We have things to react to at that point. So at that point, we'll start engaging engagement platforms, and if we can, and I hope we can, types of open houses, they're just the best form of getting people, inviting them into your house, and, and educating it as to what these dollars would work for, and, and what the financial impacts would be. And then, of course, your public hearing, your formal logistical things, and then really the outreach of get out and vote. Something I think that I also heard that's fair to mention is you sort of asked that it resemble in some ways the 2012 process. You thought that was successful, so I just mentioned that. So some key factors to consider, I won't read all of them, but I spoke about the front-loaded citizen engagement. I think it's important that the overall plan provide that flexibility to adapt to efforts to achieve the outreach goals that we need, to really be adaptive and pivot when we know we need to do it. And of course, leverage stakeholder groups is very important. So what would a timeline look like? This would be that preliminary phase that we're entering, and then we would move into the formal phase right around the time that, that we discuss with LGC, the, the actual ballot language, what we're trying to accomplish. That's in June. And then we move into the formal phase, and then, of course, the election phase. But all throughout those two processes, we'll have different levels of engagement. The orange highlighted items, just to mention, those are really anticipating of your discussions and, and actions. So as I mentioned, we have previously talked about this structure. It is based on your input, and I would just want to touch in with you tonight, is there something materially missing? Something that needs to be changed, that we need to consider, or something that needs to be removed? So I'll pause there, give you a moment, see if there's any feedback.
So I'll start real quick. If you go back one slide, it says February, March is where we're at decision point for category development. So we'll already have some good citizen engagement before that, in advance of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we'll have that information to work from.
To really leverage our portal, and, and in the most appropriate way. We're not quite ready for that, that engagement platform, but people are very accustomed to utilizing the budget portal to really provide some, some feedback to us. And then there'll be other ways through social media, obviously, that we can start to engage those conversations.
One thing that I thought was nice with the land use plan is we had some do-it-yourself kits that people could take it to their HOAs or small groups. So that might be something to consider, in addition to open houses and early things. And as you mentioned, we've already done a lot of this work, and we were pretty much to the point where we were looking at bond language and just deciding on how much money for each of those. So I'd be interested in staff's assessment of whether or not putting those out there, like, we're not gonna put four bond questions on, but if we have the language for the four different buckets, and people can actually see those, they get educated and informed a little bit earlier about what the end product is gonna look like. And I think that makes it a little bit more understandable for them. It's not so vague, this is what I'm gonna be voting for or against in November. So I'd be interested in whether or not staff thinks that's a good thing to front-load also, to sort of give people the information. I know there's lots of words there, but maybe just general ideas, this is what you'll be voting on, this or this. And we were to the point where we were looking at 15, 20, or 25 million dollars total. So it's gonna be important for staff to be able to tell us what our bond capacity is, and then which ones are actually bond-worthy? You've mentioned that earlier. Are we gonna put non-bond-worthy things in front of the citizens, or not? That's the decision we have to make as a group, I think.
So I, I, I hear what you're saying and understand. I think, I think there's ways in which we can accomplish what you're asking in, in positive ways. I think you likely need to be careful about, if you're asking for their input so that you can make the decisions for what should go on the ballot, if we're gonna go through that step. I think narrowing down the field too much might be like the decision's already made, so I would likely be careful with that. But because we have few general bond or project-type investment categories with our, related to our capital investment program, I think it's still doable in, in those ways, and that's likely the avenue that I was shooting for. So I, I think I, I hear what you're saying, and I think it's something that staff can, can work on.
Okay, thanks, I know there's gonna be a balance. We have Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Yes. My question is about the public engagement, you know? And I know this might have worked on 2012, but the circumstances are completely changed with COVID, and then especially having, you know, walk-in sessions and those things. I think very soon it'll be things in the past, because June, when you want to have, go into the formal phase, my concern is will we have sufficient amount of information that has been like a due diligence that we have done? You know, portals, we know, you know, like, been six years, how many comments we get in the public portal for a budget. And depends on what the issue is, we certainly get, for transportation, we got more. So how can we have a creative way of engaging the people? Because end of the day, they are the people who will be voting. That's my primary concern with the COVID going on, you know? And also, can we get, it's been a long time, I, in our country, collect what we have in the 2017 citizen survey, the results of it? And then I assume, like, the new one will come next year, all right? Because it's already touching four years.
Correct. So we do have the 2017 survey, so I, I have in the back of my mind, a group of citizens that once told me, if you survey me every year, I'm gonna tell you the same thing, that we always want roads, parks, those are the primary important things that we, we want to look for. So, so I will pull up that 2017 information, make sure council has that. A lot of our conversation about projects and what you want to invest in for bonds, refining what the, the ballot information, or in some cases this year, really revalidating what maybe conversations you've already had, is gonna occur at your retreat. That's gonna be a critical discussion, so we want to layer on as much information before then. So you've got what you need to refresh where we were, where we thought we were headed, and then just sort of reassess, is it still the same, same plan? And then fold into that any new feedback that we can garner from the community that helps you feel confident in the decision. Throughout the process, staff is going to evaluate these mechanisms, and, and that's where we want to make sure that we're capable to shift and adapt appropriately, as a communication team should, so that we can reapply different strategies. If we feel like, yeah, outreach isn't working, so we will be monitoring for that, and, and we'll be pivoting appropriately.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Uh, yeah, this question is for Ms. Hooks. I just wanted to know, do you have any, do you have any numbers on the level of engagement that came to us through the budget portal? Like, out of the number of citizens, how many unique engagers were there in the portal? Like, I'm just trying to get a sense of the, the quality of feedback, or the, the breadth of feedback that we're likely to get from, from the...
Okay, in, in previous years, it's been five to seven. I think this past year, we were, we were well over 10, 15, I, I think we may have been almost at 20. So I was a little more impressed by that outreach. Again, it's what other vehicles are we leveraging to let people know that we have this, these questions out there and we want to, to get that information? So it's leveraging your, your committee members, it's leveraging your social media, your website, a postcard to say, hey, this is the time we want to collect your input through this vehicle. Log on, give us your information. Log on, give us your information.
Okay. So that was, did you mean like 10,000 to 20,000 different people? 10 to 20?
People.
10 to 20 people.
Okay. That's not really a majority.
No, no. Your social media outlets have a much wider audience, as does, like, your Next Week in Morrisville, where we can put this out and get that feedback to come back to us. And then if the pilot program for engagement platforms is ready, that's another way in which we can bring some of these info back into the community, or back in here to utilize.
Okay. I guess that seems like an awful lot of work, to get 10 to 20 opinions. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what the answer is, but that does seem like a lot of feedback for an awful lot of work. So I guess we'll keep noodling on that.
Councilmember Rao, please.
One of the things that I think is a great opportunity is the tremendous work that our communications department has been doing. When 2012, when we floated the bonds, we had a lot of engagement sessions, which were great. But I think there's a great opportunity, working with Will and his team, to make sure that we do, as Mayor Colley said, giving the information in a little bit more advance of these different buckets, and really, really providing an extremely aggressive social media campaign through our Facebook sites, through Twitter, through all kinds of ways we can get that information out to the public. Because I think a digital outreach is going to be more and more critically important, as Councilmember Garamella said. You know, I think the reality is that the engagement, we don't know, we know people are engaged because they're sending emails in the portal, but, you know, it's hard to really sense how engaged they really are. And when things do get back to normal, even if a vaccine, people start taking the vaccine in December, they're saying by the fall of next year, that's what Dr. Gupta says from CNN, that's when we're going to see more of a new normal. But then it'll be too late to get that information out. So I think that's where I'm, and Councilmember Garamella brought up a good point, I want to make sure that we all feel comfortable that we're doing our due diligence to get that input. We've done a lot of the work already, but I really want to make sure the next couple months, we're getting really aggressive with how we engage folks, that we want their input, we want them to email us, we want them to go to Facebook. Maybe, you know, Chief Andrews did a great job with the Facebook Lives, which were very well-attended on crime and public safety. I think this is a great opportunity for us to leverage our tremendous communications department to do that. So just some food for thought, because I think that that is one thing that we have today in a much stronger fashion than we didn't have, you know, eight years ago.
Mayor Protim Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, but yeah, this whole, and Councilmember Garamella said it well, this way to be creative in the way we engage people. And to Councilmember Rao's point, you know, eight years ago, we didn't have the technology or some of the social media platforms, or they weren't used as much as they are now. But I will tell you, eight months ago, we didn't, we weren't sure how to engage people virtually, and we've come a long way. So I agree. I think our communications staff can help us figure out how we engage the public with, to get some real valid input. And, yeah, Facebook Lives, or even these, I've been on, I don't, now I can't remember, I couldn't tell you if it was a WebEx or a Zoom, or maybe they all have it, where you can poll the participants. So, you know, maybe that's something, we utilize all of that. So, yeah, this idea of being really creative to engage the public is going to be important. And I would, I would, I would challenge every council member, it is our responsibility and duty to make sure that the public knows what's going on, and that we encourage them to participate. I mean, I think that's my responsibility to, you know, when you talk about 10 to 15 people that input in the portal, I would hope each one of us would ask at least 10 to 15 people to engage in the process, and that will help bring those numbers up, and will help to get the public to participate. I've said this repeatedly over the years, I think when you reach out one-on-one and ask somebody, you get a better result. So if you ask somebody and you tell them their participation is really important, they're going to follow through, for the most part, maybe not everybody. So I would challenge each one of us to do that. And then I would also say, make sure we're engaging our committee members, all the advisory committees, you know, they're already in tune, maybe to a bigger degree than others in the community. So we need to make sure we're tapping into all of those folks. And otherwise, Jeanne, I think you're on the right path. I think, you know, I think this is going to be a challenge. It would have been a greater challenge earlier this year, but I think you all and we all are up to the challenge, and I think we can accomplish this. So I think your plan is, you're on the right path. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you. I was just going to add, you know, I have full confidence that our communications team is going to fully utilize all the digital methods of getting the word out. I still think, you know, even though of COVID, that not all hope is lost, we can still get information out, well, not necessarily one-on-one, but out in the public, just through the, at the farmer's market, at the aquatics and fitness center, the community center, even possibly have displays at Park West and Grease Park. And even, I mean, especially, well, as we get into spring and through the winter, as more, as so many people are using our parks, we could have a display at all of our town parks as well. So I think, you know, we've got plenty of opportunities to get this information out and get feedback from our residents. I agree.
I think you've heard from everyone. Is there anything else you want to share or have us react to at this time?
Those were very good thoughts to take back. Will is actively listening tonight. He's a very big part of this, he and his team, and he is excited to be a part of this. I'd say COVID has, in some ways, given us opportunities and taught us different ways to be engaged at different levels. And I think we might find, we might be pleasantly surprised at the level of real engagement that does come through these virtual tools. It's just recognizing when to leverage them appropriately, when to pivot and adjust and adapt appropriately. And we have so many more stakeholder groups accessible to us now, because our communication department, for example, has done outreach to really collect these parties through HOAs, through businesses, and through, obviously, our committees. And we can start really branching out and spreading the word in very different ways. I look forward to that.
As do we. Thank you very much for the report.
I do have one thing to mention, just to catch you up with, staff is actually working with the financial advisors, so that we can actually understand what our capacity is post-CAFRA, post-audit. So we're actually having conversations with them, having conversations recently with our bond counsel to really understand some logistical strategies that we might want to deploy, and I might have one coming back after it's evaluated first in January that has to do with measures of resolution to, with intent to reimburse. So that's just a strategy, something I'll talk to you a lot more about, potentially after it's evaluated, I might bring an item back to you in January. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hooks. Appreciate it. Does our management team have anything for the good of the order before we essentially close down the public part of the meeting?
No, sir. We're ready for that.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor, may I?
I recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143 that 3 and 18 that 11A5, I move that we go into closed session for the discussion of a real property acquisition matter.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith, if you could take us into closed session via roll call vote.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to enter closed session, pass it to you now, Mr. Lee.
Okay. Thank you, staff and public. As you heard from everyone, we wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one as well. Our next meeting is December 1st, 6:00 p.m. for a work session. We hope to see you then. At this time, we will close out this team's meeting and join the closed teams' meeting, and staff who is not essential to this closed session will be dismissed. Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving.